We'll go in then. We will start with considering action on closed session items. Who wants to go first, Mr. Burdine?
Yes, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees accept the hearing officer's recommendation concerning the Level Three Employee Grievance Appeal of Christopher Moore.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I move to appoint-
So I think they're waiting for you to vote. Did your-
Oh.
Did it not, it's not working.
Not registering. It looked like. Not registering.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Mr. Burdine?
Yes, I move to terminate Mary Schwartz's term employment contract for good cause and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify Ms. Schwartz of this action in accordance with applicable law and policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mr. George?
Yes, Madam President, I move to appoint Veronica Sofor to the position of Chief of Communications.
We have a motion by Mr. George and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mr. Rice?
Madam President, I move to appoint Deirdre Holloway to the position of Director of Federal and Special Programs.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mrs. James?
I move to appoint Stephen Vero to the position of Director of Materials Management.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Ms. Heliger?
I move to propose termination of Amelia Jobe's probationary employment contract for good cause and to authorize the superintendent or his designee to notify Ms. Jobe of this action in accordance with applicable laws and policies.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Ms. Heliger?
Yes, I would like to, I move to appoint Gichi Uwaga Sanders to this position of High School Associate Principal and to approve her as a Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System Appraiser for 2016, 17-year, pending her completion of appraisal qualifications according to the Commissioners Rules Concerning Educator Appraisal provided in the Texas Administrative Code.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Mrs. James?
I move that the Board approve the proposed amendment to Dr. Dupree's superintendent contract as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. That's all of our closed session action items. We will now move on to the Board members' reports. We'll start with the activity report. Ms. Heliger?
Thank you. As of October 17th for this month, since we last reported, our Board has been very busy and we have done the following. Representing Rick Miller's Education Advisory Team Meetings, Construction and Facilities Committee Meetings, Visit and Tour Armstrong Elementary School, Vision and Planning Committee Meetings, Trustee Roundtable Meetings with Senator Colcorst, Fort Bend Chamber Education Division Legislative Dinner, TASB meeting, TASB Delegate Assembly, TASB Legislative Advisory Committee Meeting, Visit and Tour Hunter Glen Elementary School, Visit and Tour Ridgemar Elementary School, Fort Bend Volunteers Breakfast honoring Jim Rice, Fort Bend ISD Leadership 102 Breakfast, Baines, Mrs. Dr. Lynn Armstrong Breast Cancer Awareness Breakfast, Lifehouse Dinner, FEC State of the Schools Luncheon, Sullivan Elementary School Dedication, varsity Football Games, Gulf Coast Committee Meetings, and College Night. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Do we have any special reports from the Board members?
Yes, Madam President, I do. I've got two reports. First, I would like to report on my, one of my new duties as the construction liaison to the Board. I had a really productive meeting at the beginning of the month. President Tossan and I had a conversation about what it was that I was going to do as far as my duties are concerned. This team usually meets every Thursday. We decided that once a month would be sufficient for me to do some reporting. And I had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Charles Dupree, Oscar Perez, Steve Bassett, and Ron Hollyhead with Jacobs. I'm proud of the leadership that Mr. Perez has taken and he's digging every day to improve our systems and processes. I'm really encouraged by that. Mr. Perez has assembled teams to complete much-needed work in needed areas of our district, especially our older buildings and our overcrowded buildings. I want the Board and the community to know that we are being proactive in our approaches with facilities and maintenance to further protect our students, our community, and the limited tax dollars in which we have to spend. Please understand that this, that the Operations Department continues to dig deep and work with all the shortfalls, but as we are re, getting reorganized, we are changing the approach to meet the needs in a timely manner. I wanted to, I've got a long list here of operations and operation accomplishments and maintenance accomplishments, and I'm not going to read all these to you because we'd be here for quite some time, which is really encouraging. But I wanted to start off with some operation accomplishments over at Willow Ridge High School. We were able to support the City of Houston Town Hall meeting with setup and staging. There's been leveling grounds and low spots around the campus that have been fixed. Provided ongoing support for after-school hours events and increasing rental activities. We've been working on the, to improve the overall curb appeal, mulch management to all the flower beds, now incorporated into lawn maintenance on all of these sites, which is encouraging. The Fresno Ag Barn, we've initiated accelerant cleaning of the Ag Barn site. We've also provided an added support to CTE staff in manure management.
That's good.
High Tower High School, we are also improving the general curb appeal, mulch in the beds and ongoing lawn maintenance, and the gym floors have recently been resurfaced. Blue Ridge Elementary, updated commitment to work with maintenance team to assure effective work order processing and then a regular orientation on the effectiveness, custodial equipment usage in the cleaning processes. And then last but not least, Dolus Tech Ed. Once again, we are committed to work with the maintenance team to assure work order processing and general curb appeal. On to maintenance accomplishments, I'll keep this quick. Willow Ridge High School, we replaced all the stairway lighting with new LED lights. We have repaired the sidewalks of the auditorium. We repaired three storm drains, converted the old shop area into a classroom, which I know Mrs. Tossan had a part of helping with, which required 200 man-hours to degrease the walls, repair vandalized walls, and prim and paint the room. There was 152 work orders that were completed in the last 30 days, which is remarkable. High Tower High School installed a new roof on the greenhouse, new fencing around the baseball field. 61 work orders in the last 30 days have been completed at High Tower. Fresno Ag Barn repaired the road, repaired the water system, repaired the main pump for the septic system, repaired the broken fences. New LED lightings are underway, replaced the main electrical panels out there. Blue Ridge Elementary School repaired all the swing sets, ordered new handicap swing, pressure washed the front of the building. Forty-eight work orders have been completed since August the 1st. Marshall High School, we have closed 126 work orders since August the 1st, repaired leaking skylights, exterior lights, et cetera. Tech Ed at Dolus rewired the cosmetology main electrical panel to handle new equipment, electrical loads, and assisted with the automotive shop with installation of new, newly donated equipment, electrical plumbing requirements. So as you can see, we have lots of great things to report as far as the operations and maintenance is concerned. I feel good about what we're doing and I look forward to more improvement and all going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Do you have a second report?
I sure do. So I'm in the Fort Bend Shaver Leadership Forum, and we had the pleasure of having Education Day the other day, and I was really encouraged and very proud. They had a panel that was set up first thing in the morning. It was Dr. Dupree, the Harmony School Superintendent, there was the Fort Bend Christian Academy Superintendent, and the Logo Superintendent. And Dr. Charles Dupree was, he just looked great up there. I was very proud of him. A message that really rang with me was just what we're able to provide to all children, which was just, I couldn't have been more proud. We also had a panel of four students from each one of those organizations that was in a panel after that. They talked about time management, they talked about just overall experience, how they think diversities helped them. I couldn't have been more proud. We had Luke Metzer, he's a student from Dolus High School. He's their quarterback. He's a leader not only in athletics, he's a leader in the classroom, he's a leader in school clubs. He's just a general leader in general, and he looked like a man up there compared to all the other students. And I'm saying that not by his looks, but just the way he carried himself. It looked like he had had a really well-re, well-rounded education, and he has aspirations of going to MIT, if, Texas A&amp;M, he wants to be an engineer. So I was really proud of him. That was really encouraging. And then I wanted to say thank you to Amanda Bubella, she was there helping with that. And then last but not least, later on in the day, Jim Rice was able to meet up with us at TSTC as the Fort Bend Chamber Education Division Chair. And once again, he worked his magic and just gave a really good presentation. Our whole class really enjoyed it and we got a lot out of that, so I just wanted to recognize him and thank him for his efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. We appreciate both of those reports. Mr. Rice, did you have a special report?
Yes, Madam President. You may recall I was serving on the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards as a director. I attended my resignation to that organization because of some new duties with TASB, and I've been informed they've accepted it. And the Board nominated Mrs. Grail James and voted unanimously to approve her as the new director, so she'll be representing, serving on the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards. She will be taking names for all trustees who are attending or not.
Answer your questions.
Yes, so congratulations to you, Mrs. James. I know you'll do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Congratulations, Mrs. James. So I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here and do a couple of reports myself. First of all, I want to recognize and thank many of the people in this room, the executive team, Dr. Dupree, Mrs. Kaiser, those who helped get us squared away for our first ever listening tour last week. I felt like it was a big success. We had over 100 people in attendance, and I know all the work that it took to make that happen. I mean, we had to take basically what we do in this boardroom and take it out to a campus and all the audio and the video and all the things that that entails, and you guys did an excellent job. And so I just wanted to extend thanks to all of you who worked on that, and I know who you are, and the Board knows who you are, and you know who you are. So we want to just say thank you for that. I think it was good for us to be out in the community and to engage with parents and with staff, and you guys made that possible for us, so thank you for doing that. The second thing I would like to do is recognize Mr. Rice again, because the reason he had to resign from the Gulf Coast Area School Board is because he was elected to be TASB's new Secretary Treasurer. And so we are very proud of him, and we appreciate his service as we appreciate Mrs. James's service. It is really important, I'm not sure if the community understands how important it is for Board members to be engaged with TASB and with boards like the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards, and to have representatives in those organizations, not only so that we can advocate on behalf of the students and teachers in Fort Bend ISD, but also to help keep us informed and it allows us to have a voice. And so I want to recognize him for that. That's a really big deal, so I'd like to give him a round of applause.
Yes.
So we really appreciate your service, Jim. In addition to that, as was reported by Ms. Heliger on the activities report, Mr. Rice was recognized as Social Innovator of the Year at the Fort Bend Chamber Volunteers Breakfast, and that is quite an honor, and I was happy to be a part of that. Dr. Dupree was there, Mrs. James was there, and I think Dr. Whitbeck was there, and that, it's incredible to recognize his service, and so I just wanted to take a few minutes to do that, so. If we have no other special reports, we will move on to our consent agenda. I think we're going to pull 11B1. Do we have any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Well, Mrs. Tossan, in the, the, the items are connected in the, in the Board book, B1 and B2 in one.
Are they? Okay.
So, and, and there was a couple of editorial comment, or editorial syntax errors in the, or changes in EG Local, so we-
Okay, let's pull B1 and B2. Are there any other items?
I5.
I5. It's like bingo. All right, if there are no other items, may I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of 11B1 and 11I5 as presented.
Second. And 11B2.
And 11B2.
And 11B2.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now take up item 11B1, Board, and 11B2, Policy BQ and EG Local. May I have a motion?
Mrs. Tossan, I move to approve I, item 11B1 and B2 with the versions of the policies that are on your, at our places revised from the administration.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mrs. James?
So EG Local, there was just a couple of typos, so that's, those edits are there for you. It's nothing, there was, there's a few changes from last week, but there was nothing from what was delivered to you earlier in the week. In BQ Local, this was a little bit of an overhaul from what we discussed last week, and I think the first couple of paragraphs there were edited very well. I really appreciated the way that it was written. It's done very, very well. And the new profile of a graduate was included in the purpose as part of our alignment with, with what the Board's ideals are. So that was very good. The only, the main change for, from what was in your packet to what we're looking at tonight is in the very last paragraph, and that's the evaluations paragraph right there that's on the screen now. We just changed the wording on this a little bit to not get down into procedures and things like that, that the Board, that's not in the Board's purview. The main purpose, as I understand, and Mrs. Martinez can correct me if I'm wrong, but the main purpose of this is that the Board's evaluating the planning process to make sure that we're using data to guide the planning process and then to evaluate the planning process and to evaluate then the impact on student performance. So this, the purpose is to make sure we're making data-driven decisions. So we just reworded it a little bit and made that, tried to make that a little bit more clear. The phrase in there that says required biennial evaluation is a legal requirement, and that's, that threw me for a loop for a minute because it's not, there's other reviews that are mentioned annually or periodically, but this is actually a legal requirement that we do a biennial, biennial evaluation focused on student performance data as it is related to their planning process. So that's my explanation, and I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mrs. James, and thank you for your work on these policies. Do we have other questions or comments by the Board members? Okay, hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now take up 11I5. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 11I.5 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion?
Madam President, and I was just curious, Mr. Perez, if when you negotiate the contract with the water treatment chemical firm, if we will be installing water meters on the discharge side and the make-up water side that can be connected to the building automation system monitored by the staff with some protocols built in that will alarm the staff if an excessive amount of water is being discharged and otherwise draining the chemical barrel prematurely. That's the question.
Mr. Rice, I would have to get back to you on that. I do not know that answer, but I can definitely find out for sure. I would think that we would want to be doing that, but I don't have that answer for you right at this time.
All right. When you have time, if you could just let me know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Moving on to our action items, 12A, approval and of an order authorizing the establishment of the Fort Bend ISD Commercial Paper Program. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve Action Item 12A as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Mr. Rice?
I don't really have any discussion. I think it's been discussed enough.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Hearing none, please vote. It didn't clear from before. No, ma'am. Do we need to vote again? Okay, please vote. Motion passes. Okay, now we have Action Item 12B, which will be considered, considering approval of the Board legislative resolutions, and we will take these one at a time, starting with school finance, and the resolutions are at your, at your seat on, on paper. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve Action Item 12B1. Do you want me to name all of them?
No.
Just one at a time.
B1 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Mr. Rice?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to read this resolution, and I beg the audience's indulgence, but I'll be issuing you .25 CEUs at the end of the meeting tonight. I would like to take a com, to make one comment, and that is to recognize President Tossan and the Board and Dr. Dupree for their leadership and advocacy on behalf of public education. That is not just a recommendation for a trustee, it's an obligation that a trustee should advocate in support of public education in general and Fort Bend ISD in particular. And I would further like to say that I, at the State of the Schools Luncheon last week, of which I have been to every single one in nine years, Dr. Dupree gave the best presentation that I have heard of from any superintendent in nine years, comments that were on point. That luncheon is designed to inform the public about challenges, goals, and opportunities, and he touched on topics that have largely been soft-soaped or ignored in the past, and I was very proud of him for making those comments, and he did a very good job, Charles. So now I'll read the resolution. This is Resolution of Acknowledgement: Making School Finance a Legislative Priority. Whereas the Texas Supreme Court, despite recognizing the brokenness of the state's system of financing public education, declined to find the system unconstitutional and concluded it was up to the state legislature to fix the many deficits and equities that plagued the school finance system. And whereas Fort Bend ISD is expecting an estimated $4.4 million decrease in state revenue in the 2016-17 school year due to the flawed state funding formula, and the reduction in state funding is occurring even as the district adds students and local property values are increasing. And whereas Fort Bend ISD opens three new schools in 2017 and '18 and budget planning forecasts beginning the school year with a $9 million, $9 million deficit before any teacher raises, which directly affects classroom instruction and providing the best-in-class teachers and adequately funded technology and instructional materials, it is therefore resolved that the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees respectfully empower and support our respected state legislators to act on behalf of the district's 74,000 students and 10,000 employees to support an updated and adequately funded formula-based school finance system, which takes into account our district's diverse student characteristics when determining appropriate levels of funding to meet state and local standards. Be it further resolved that state legislators update outdated, outdated school finance formula elements like the Cost of Education Index, CEI, and transportation allotment, and simplify the formula by moving to a single-tier system. And be it further resolved that state legislators tie property value increases statewide and recapture payments to the state to an increase in the basic allotment. And be it further resolved that state legislators adequately fund the instructional materials allotment to ensure districts can provide adequate technology and instructional materials to meet increased standards for students. And be it further resolved that this priority begins with the leadership of the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, and together we share one unified message to all involved. We believe all children can learn. We have high expectations for each of the students we serve. We want to use all resources to make a difference in the lives of each child. The future of Texas depends on educating our growing enrollment with diverse needs, and the public schools are charged by the Texas Constitution with this great mission for Texas. Approved and adopted the 17th day of October 2016 by the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have additional comments from the trustees or questions? Hearing none, please vote. Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item B2, School Choice Resolution. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we approve item 12B2.
Second.
As presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion?
I too would like to read my resolution for acknowledgement. Making constitutional support of public schools a legislative priority. Whereas, the mission of the public education system of this state is to ensure that all Texas children have access to quality education that enables them to achieve their potential and fully participate now and in the future in the social, economic, and educational opportunities of our state and nation. Texas Education Code 4.001. Whereas, the Lieutenant Governor of Texas gave the Senate Education Committee an interim charge to study the implementation of school choice in other states, including the impact on student performance and district budgets to determine the best school choice plan to serve Texas students. Whereas, the traditional voucher plan, tax credits, or education savings accounts would divert public tax dollars to private entities or homeschool students with little or no financial accountability to the state taxpayers or local communities, with exemption from state and federal accountability requirements, and are free from the burden of many state and federal regulations and mandates. It is therefore resolved that the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees respectfully empower and support our respected state legislators to uphold their constitutional duty to make suitable provisions for the support and maintenance of an efficient system of public free schools, and focus their efforts on supporting the public schools, which, by their own laws, have been created to be available to and accessible by all children. Be it further resolved that, that state legislators oppose traditional vouchers, tax credit scholarships, ESAs, and other programs that divert tax dollars away from the more than 90% of the students in public education. Be it further resolved that state legislators ensure the quality of virtual school options for students by limiting the expansion to only high-quality virtual school providers. Be it further resolved that this priority begins within the leadership of the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, and together we share one unified message to all involved. We believe all children can learn. We have high expectations for each of the students we serve. We want to use all resources to make a difference in the lives of each child. The future of Texas depends on educating our growing enrollment with diverse needs, and the public schools are charged by the Texas Constitution with this great mission for Texas. Approved and adopted this 7th day of October 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Do we have additional comments from the trustees? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item 12B3, Accountability and Assessment Resolution. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we accept item 3, no, 12B3 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Mrs. James?
Yes, Mrs. Tosse, and I'd like to read the Resolution of Acknowledgement. Making accountability and assessment a legislative priority. Whereas, the purpose of the current state accountability system is not clearly defined, and the current assessment system is overly burdensome on students and teachers, and does not effectively prepare students for post-secondary education or careers. Whereas, studies show and districts experience the negative effects of excessive high-stakes testing on students, and in addition, the test-driven curriculum does not allow for creativity and depth of learning in our classrooms, depriving students of a diverse and enriched educational experience. And whereas, a high percentage of Texas students are graduating from high school needing remediation in core subjects such as math and English. It is therefore resolved that the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees respectfully empower and support our respected state legislators to overhaul the current accountability and assessment system in Texas to align with federal requirements and reduce the number of high-stakes tests students are required to take. Limit testing to readiness standards to allow for more focus on deeper student outcomes and content mastery, and ensure college and career readiness by including post-secondary readiness assessments to the indicators of the state's accountability system in Domain Four. Be it further resolved that state legislators align the state and federal accountability systems to eliminate confusion and ensure transparency at the campus and district levels. Be it further resolved that state legislators streamline state academic assessments to what is federally required, reading English Language Arts and Math in grades three through eight and Science in the specified grade spans. Be it further resolved that state legislators ensure adequate resources, time, funding, and staffing levels to support full implementation of House Bill Five to achieve college readiness goals. Be it further resolved that state legislators restore meaningfulness and utility of state-administered accountability systems by opposing A through F letter grades as campus and district ratings. Be it further resolved that state legislators develop reasonable assessment options that are sensitive to diversity, special education, accelerated learners, English language learners, and others that are critical to meet the needs of all students. Be it further resolved that state legislators include post-secondary readiness assessments such as the ACT, SAT, AP, IB, ASPIRE, et cetera, to the indicators of the state's accountability system in Domain Four. And be it further resolved that this priority begins with the leadership of the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, and together we share one unified message to all involved. We believe all children can learn. We have high expectations for each of the students we serve. We want to use all resources to make a difference in the lives of each child. The future of Texas depends on educating our growing enrollment with diverse needs, and the public schools are charged by the Texas Constitution with this great mission for Texas.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Do we have additional comments from the trustees?
I'd like to make a comment, Mrs. Tosse. I had the opportunity today to be in a meeting with Senator Joan Huffman, who represents part of our district, and it is a reminder to me that we need to share these resolutions tonight with our senators and our state senators and our state representatives that, that represent our district, and even those that don't, but particularly those who do and interact with them. In a way, Mr. Rice was suggesting this is part of our responsibility. But I did speak to a member of Senator Huffman's staff and said she should expect some correspondence from us and expect these resolutions to come to their office.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Please vote. Motion passes. Item 12B4, Streamlining the TEACs, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills Resolution. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve 12B4 as read.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mr. Rice. Is that right? Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Please note that I said as read, as I am changing or adding a couple words here.
Okay.
Resolution of Acknowledgement: Making Streamlining the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills a Legislative Priority. Whereas, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills curriculum standards that ensure all state-mandated content standards for a particular grade level are currently too broad and need to be streamlined and better aligned with college readiness standards. Whereas, students and teachers are overworked due to the extreme number of curriculum standards required to be taught in a school year, and the volume of standards necessitates a fast pace in the classroom, causing many students to fall behind without hope of gaining the foundational knowledge required to be proficient in the core subjects and ready for post-secondary education and careers. Whereas, streamlining the TEACs curriculum standards to better align with college readiness standards will ensure all state-mandated content standards for a particular grade level can be reasonably expected to be taught in a single year without inundating students and teachers with unreasonable homework assignments and causing students who cannot keep up with the pacing to be left behind. It is therefore resolved that the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees respectfully empower and support our respected state legislators to streamline the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills curriculum standards to align with college readiness standards. Be it further resolved that state legislators require the Texas Education Agency to conduct a comprehensive study of the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills to ensure a multifaceted approach to the written and taught curriculum. Be it further resolved that state legislators streamline the content and scope of the TEACs of each foundation curriculum subject that our teachers and students must cover with emphasis on college readiness standards at secondary levels. Be it further resolved that state legislators provide aligned support and training for all, including educator professional development, access to instructional resources, reducing the number of TEACs and limiting testing to readiness standards. Be it further resolved that this priority begins within the leadership of the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, and together we share one unified message to all involved. We believe all children can learn. We have high expectations for each of the students we serve. We want to use all resources to make a difference in the lives of each child. The future of Texas depends on educating our growing enrollment with diverse needs, and the public schools are charged by the Texas Constitution with this great mission for Texas. Approved and adopted this 17th day of October 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Madam Board President, if there were additional words in a couple of the paragraphs, they really should be treated as a form of an amendment to the resolution because the motion and the second was to approve the resolution as originally proposed. So, I gather...
Actually, when I read the resolution, I said as read.
Oh, it was your original motion?
That was his original motion, yes. And I, are the board members in agreement on the two words that Mr. Rosenthal inserted, which are, we will point them out here, in the second, whereas paragraph, it's, he added after students and teachers, and in the third, whereas paragraph, the third line down, middle of the sentence, after students, he added and teachers.
Yes, I think that's a great addition.
Me too. Hearing no further discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Finally, we have 12B5, which is the funding amendment to Senate Bill 507 Resolution. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burden and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Mr. Burden?
Yes, Madam President. Whereas, Senate Bill 507 is an unfunded mandate that provides video surveillance for the purpose of promoting student safety in certain self-contained classrooms and other special education settings. And in March 2015, the Texas Education Commissioner requested an expedited opinion from the Attorney General seeking clarification as to the scope of a single request, and that the AG expressed his inability to rewrite legislation. Whereas, unfunded legislative mandates, including Senate Bill 507, require districts to divert funds from other needed educational programs or from teacher salaries in order to fund the mandate. Whereas, Fort Bend ISD estimates spending approximately $5 million to fund Senate Bill 507, all of the which must be taken from other programs that benefit students. It is therefore resolved that the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees respectfully empower state legislators to amend Senate Bill 507, which will promote student safety in special education settings and help prevent any intentional abuse of students with special needs, including some of who are non-verbal. Be it further resolved that the legislators adequately funded Senate Bill 507, as it is an unfunded mandate, and school districts face tremendous costs associated with its implementation. Be it further resolved that the state legislators clarify Senate Bill 507 by amending section 29.022 to the limit the request to a single classroom rather than to each school and to each self-contained classroom or other special education setting. Be it further resolved that the state legislators clarify Senate Bill 507 by amending section 29.022 to reflect the true intent of the bill in which a request by a teacher or parent guardian to install cameras requires installation only in the classroom where the teacher offers instruction or the child attends class. Be it further resolved that this priority begins with the leadership of the Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees, and together we share our one unified message to all involved. We believe all children can learn. We have high expectations for each of the students we serve. We want to use all resources to make a difference in the lives of each child. The future of Texas depends on education, educating our growing enrollment with diverse needs, and the public schools are charged by the Texas Constitution with this great mission for Texas. Approved and adopted this 17th day of October 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Do we have additional comments from the board? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board members for reading the resolutions. I think it's very important that they are read into the record, so to speak, and that the community hears the voice of this board loud and clear, which is unanimous on all five of these legislative priorities. I would also like to take a moment to thank Mrs. Porter for her work on these, on getting these legislative priorities together. She and I worked closely together, and she drove a lot of this work, and so I want to acknowledge her and thank her for her help in that. Okay, moving on to item 13, we will review future board meeting agenda items.
All right, as you can see, we're heading into a period in November of a great deal of board governance oversight, in term, management oversight, excuse me, in terms of night-and-week student data update, information item, a bond program update, a facilities update, as well as strategic planning update on quarter one. And then there'll be action on a number of items related to planning, the superintendent evaluation, and some policy items. We've also provided a number, again, of management oversight items that the board has specifically asked for that would range anywhere from the December board meeting all the way into the spring semester, generally into March and February. Items on the data dashboard development, curriculum audit update. I won't read the whole list, but you can see there's a number of things that we'll be providing updates on in the coming months.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Do we have questions from the board members? Mrs. James?
I have a question. On the list, at the very beginning, it says public hearing, District of Innovation. Could you remind me, is that a separate meeting? Do we have a conversation as part of our regular meeting? What's the process that we're going to be, how does that work if the public wants to get involved?
So, the way this, so the purpose of this meeting is to do the public hearing similar to what we did tonight on the TAEZ Plan. So, we will do a presentation to lay out our plan and our approach to the District of Innovation and some informational items, and then the board, the board will hear that, and then the public will have opportunity to give public comment about their perspective on it. And then from that point, then the board would then take action to determine to proceed or not proceed with the District of Innovation process.
Based on the public hearing and the comments received from the public at that time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Any additional questions? Okay, I can, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that this meeting is adjourned.
We stand adjourned, and I would like to note that the time is 8:27 PM, just before 8:30.